Good morning, everybody. Today is Monday, August 14th, 2023. The time is 9:01 a.m. I'm going to call this regular term meeting, B County Commissioners Court, to order. We're physically located at the B County Courthouse Commissioners Courtroom, number 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, 78102. That was the call to order. Moving along to Agenda Item Number Two, prayer. Would everybody please stand and join Reverend Musler with a prayer?
Most high and all loving God, you are the source of life and love, hope and peace, and we thank you for the fresh start of possibility on this new day. And we recognize your care for creation, and we pray that all of us, especially those these are servants, would join in loving this county we call home, just as you love this place and people. Give our leaders your justice and righteousness, your wisdom and courage, and help this Commissioners Court to listen, first of all, to you, to the whole community, and to one another. Help them to amplify the voices of those in our community who are the most vulnerable and rarely heard. Lord, sit with them, give them joy, peace at what they are doing, and good decisions. Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Please join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Excellent. Thank you all. Please be seated. We're at Agenda Item Number Four. This is recognition of visitors. As an initial matter, welcome, everybody that's in the audience today. This is not public comment, but this is an opportunity if there's anybody that would like to identify that they're here on the record. You are welcome to do it. Once again, we'll get to public comment a little bit later on in the agenda, but if you don't want to speak in public comment, but you do want to identify that you are here, please do so at this time. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners Court, opening remarks. At this point in time, ladies and gentlemen, we have recently lost a longtime former community leader in Judge Raul Casades. I'd ask for everybody to take a moment of silence in honor of his life and in recognition of his passing. You know, I think most of us in the room probably have known our new Judge Casades for most of our adult lives. I know I sure did. And the only thing I'll say about Judge Casades is I don't think I ever interacted with him when he didn't have an inviting smile and a welcoming wave, no matter if it was just on, you know, passing me behind our buildings downtown or somewhere else on the road or in person down here at the courthouse. So I know he and his family and those that loved him will miss him greatly, as will the entire community. Thank you for that moment of silence. At this point in time, I will turn matters over to the ever circumspect and briefly spoken Commissioner Christopher Lynn. Have the floor, sir.
Thank you. It's been a busy, it's been, what, three weeks since our last Commissioners Court, hasn't it?
Nice. No good deed goes unpunished?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. I got together with Dolly 107.1 back in July, end of July, we did a, you know, free hot dogs and chips and drinks and full passage for the kids that day. That was a cool deal. Attended the 4H banquet on the 31st of this past month, which was, it was really nice. It's amazing to watch those kids and how mature that they are at such a young age and how they're able to hold a meeting and do the banquet as they did it. That was pretty cool. Spoke with Vicente at TechStop about Business 181 and 351 at the four-way. There's been a lot of complaints on that road, that scabbing coming in from Skidmore. And he, they went out there the other day and they shaved it, but he called me back and said that they are not done with that. They still plan on to pave that entire stretch of highway here very near future. So that's still coming. Went out and helped Robbie. We found some illegal dumping on Ridgeway, two different locations. Investigation was done, and the violators were identified, and appropriate action was taken. We also went picked up a mattress and box bring in the orange lane, as well as some illegal dumping on County Road 541, about five miles south of Tynan. This was all done in the same afternoon. And I'd like to, commune Robbie, he, it's amazing, he should have been a detective, really. He goes with very little evidence, and he tends to find out who does this dumping and goes after them. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Robbie. He does a good job at it. Also, Robbie's currently working on the case where the debris was being dumped on Charco and Colony Road, and it was a house that was being demolished on Lehman Road, Blueberry Hill. And he's found out who's doing that, and he's taking care of that as well. And also, currently working on who dumped the RV across 351 coming out of Lehman Road. So that's been sitting there for some time now, and Robbie's taking care of that. Another thing, Mr. Robbie, the Windy Hills RV park there around Ari Hall and that area, it is horrible. I've been getting a lot of phone calls. I know it's not my precinct, but I just call Robbie and let him know, hey, this, what's going on? And it's a huge fire environmental hazard. They've got extension cords running all over the place from one electrical box. It's just a mess. So he is taking care of that and trying to get the owner to get that cleaned up. So thanks for that, Robbie. Also, illegal dumping found this past Thursday at Evergreen Cemetery. Names were found and is in the process of making contact. I spoke to Jesse at Roden Bridge about the boom max needed on, I believe it was kind of Route 341. There's been several head-on collisions. The brush has just grown out into the roadway, and lady called me. She lives in Live Oak County, but travels that road to and from work. So she said she alone has almost had four head-on collisions. She's worried about a lot of high school kids take that road, and she don't want something bad happening.
What's the road number again?
I believe it's 341. I'll have to check it, but I'll let you know for sure. I attended the active shooter drill at Ari Hall and was posted up at the command center. And that was pretty cool to see how everything was planned and coordinated, how they involved law enforcement, emergency management, and medics and whatnot. That was an eye-opening experience, so, and it went off without a hitch. Very good, very good practice. Hopefully, we don't have to use it for real. Rode out with the sheriff last week, just doing traffic stops and whatnot. I need to thank Michelle Preston, Patty Johnson, Lori Minig, Julie Staples, Robbie Guerrero, Victor Gomez, Chris Molinato, Garrett Benavides, the MGM Real Estate Group, Rebecca Solis, Aaron Hughes, Faith Fojic, and Alan Burkett. We got together and cleaned up San Pedro from end to end, and took us about an hour and a half, two hours to get it all done. Also, thanks Amy Gaetan. She went out a few days before and put ant poison everywhere, so trying to help us with that. And then Arturo Gaetan went out a few days later and was spraying the fence lines all the way around the perimeter. So thank you guys for all that. I attended a meeting with the scoring committee, along with Mr. Mercer, our engineer, about the EOC and trying to get that built. I attended the sixth annual birthday party for Dolly 107 at the Expo this past Saturday. That was a big hit. A lot of people showed up for that. Hot, but usually he has it there at the radio station on the street, and I'm glad you didn't do it this year out there, because it wouldn't have been anyone there. So also, we're still doing the fan drive for the community, where drop-off and pickup is at the Blue Ribbon Feed Store. That is still going on, so if you need a fan or if you want to donate a fan, we're still currently doing that. And then I got with Walmart yesterday, and I want to thank them for donating a pallet of water to me to give to the Tynan Volunteer Fire Department. And David, I'll be bringing that out this afternoon, sometime after six, so have plenty of hands there to help unload it. And then also, got with Gabriel Alamay Angel Care, and I want to thank him for, he bought a pallet of water, and thanks Tractor Supply at a discounted price, so we can give this Skidmore-Tynan Boys and Girls Athletic Department. With that, I will pass to my left.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I serve a little things and then a big thing that impacts the health and safety of everybody in B County. First thing I'd like to do is some kudos this morning to Brittany, our clerk, on the minutes that she's prepared for the court. We had talked some time ago about getting the minutes ready. When I read over the minutes this weekend, they are the best that I have seen since I've been here. They were excellent. Normally, in the way I talk, normally it doesn't come out right on the minutes, and I have a lot of corrections. I had two very, very minor ones, so good job.
Thank you.
And it wasn't just good, it was excellent.
Thank you.
You did good.
Appreciate that.
So keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
What we're going to talk about this morning is rabies. As you know, in one of my previous careers with the county, I was a rabies control officer. Mr. Guerrero is a rabies control officer now. This is a time of year that rabies manifests itself more than near the time of the year. Bats, skunks are the two main carriers. If you see a wild animal out in the daytime that shouldn't be there, especially a skunk, staggering around, they're acting funny, leave them alone. In law enforcement terms, dispatch the animal humanely. If you want to have the animal tested for rabies, do not dispatch it in the head. The brain is what has to be tested. Do not play with bats. If you have kids, tell them, leave the bats alone. Don't fool with them. When I was with Parks and Wildlife in the valley, our state parks in the valley, there's a huge amount of rabies that occurs in the valley this time of the year. We actually, and it was voluntarily on their park, the staff was vaccinated against rabies because we had so many dogs and stuff down there that were rabid. When I was a young boy, my daddy was a foreman on a big ranch out of Harlingen. Fansworth Brothers had a big ranch and a farm down there. And during the summers, I would go down, and we would find rabid animals. And you could tell, you could tell there was something wrong with them. They're chewing on stuff they shouldn't be chewing on, they're staggering around. If you dispatched a rabid dog, the predators, the buzzers and stuff would not touch it. They wouldn't touch it. They knew something was wrong. And my daddy was in a barn one day and had to get in a barrel to get away from a rabid dog. Just jumped up in the barrel, the dog was after him. So be on the lookout for something strange with animals, and we'll talk about your pets this minute. I have some show and tell here. But another time that rabies was evident, I was in a state park in East Texas. Lady came to the headquarters and said, my son just got bitten by a squirrel. I know the squirrel has rabies. Come down, hurry, hurry, hurry. So you go down to the location, and you look around, and you say, okay, ma'am, which squirrel was it? There's 15 or 20 squirrels in the trees. She said, I'm not sure. I said, how do you know it has rabies? Because it bit my son. I said, what was your son doing when it bit him? He was feeding the squirrel and grabbed it. So think about what you're doing, and squirrels, rabbits, mice, and rats normally do not have rabies because they don't survive the initial attack. And I had asked that question during my rabies training of the veterinarian that was in charge, and she said they don't survive the attack is why you don't find them with rabies. Now, skunks are out right now. They're looking for food. They're moving into the urban areas. They're looking for water. If your pet gets sprayed, and it just happened to us this last week, and our neighbor this last week, what do you do? A lot of people say, get some tomato juice. Well, then all you got's a nasty dog.
Give him up.
You give him up, you send him to the spray. Okay. Please don't. This, I have the cure right here, and a chemist came up with this. Okay, real simple. Hydrogen peroxide, less than a dollar at Walmart or HEB. Bacon soda, less than a dollar, Walmart or HEB, and just a squirt of Dawn detergent. What you do, get a bucket, you pour all this in there, mix it up, put one squirt of Dawn detergent in there, and then sponge it on your animal. The smell is gone immediately, then just spray it off. If you have a large animal, double up on everything. Keep this in your house at all times or at your camp house, because it's going to happen. It works on people, too, but it works. My wife has a newspaper column. She runs this about once or twice a year. I think she's fixing to run it again. It's so simple. Hydrogen peroxide, bacon soda, Dawn detergent. It gets the smell.
Can I have a quick comment?
Yes, sir.
So that does work. Two nights ago, I saw a skunk in the yard. I was hoping he was going to leave. I let my dog out for the night to go do his thing, and then all of a sudden, I heard him just go wild, and then I heard the spray, and it was bad. And I did have those ingredients at the house and mixed it together. And I've tried other ingredients. I've tried the skunk soap and everything. That didn't work. This worked immediately. The smell was gone instantly, so.
It's cheap.
It works.
But once you mix it up, you can't save it. Use it all up and get rid of it.
That's correct. Because that'll explode if you save it.
Well, and the rest of the story, your pets, be sure they're vaccinated against rabies. Be sure their boosters are up to date.
Yep, they are.
Do it immediately. Don't wait till they are in a fight with a skunk in the backyard. Not only will they stink, but now you've got the possibility of having to quarantine them for about 10 days. And if it's, you don't have them vaccinated, you're probably going to have to have them quarantined. The veterinarian, which is going to cost you, and there's only one or two here that have the proper facilities to quarantine for rabies. Otherwise, if it's okay with your rabies control officer, you could home quarantine. But get them vaccinated. Do you live out in the country? Get them vaccinated. Get the boosters done. Keep them up to date. With that, sir, I'll pass.
Thank you, Commissioner. Brittany, I can't wait to see the write-up on that.
I'd like to.
Compliment her and then give her a real doozy. Commissioner, buddy, it's your turn.
Real busy during this last few weeks. I'll start off with Roden Bridge, resurfacing all the areas behind the McCoys area, Finner Street, getting ready for school. So they did Finner Street, and then they did about three, four roads in Oakmots and resurfaced some of those over there, Oakmots. And hey, we got to tip our hat to the guys at Roden Bridge that then come to the court. I know I got a phone call. The chips better broke, and they thought, man, automatically thought it was an emergency there. But the guys pulled through, got a welder that they knew, come out there, and they repaired it, and they continued on. So they pushed through. So I want to thank our departments for, you know, being resourceful enough to handle it on their own, like they should, you know, so.
Thank you, Molly.
Yes. And it was, I think, Rayland Goria and Molly and Jesse Everlona that took care of that problem. The next one is the maintenance department. We've had several meetings with AEP trying to get this generator pad and this transformer changed over. We've had, and they've all worked out, but we've had all these meetings with the city, with the, you know, the contractors and Mr. Mercer and everybody else. They shut the power off here Friday at 5:00. They were done by 1:30 on Saturday, and it was hot. Those guys were out here working and changing that transformer. I mean, they got one shade treatment, they still work really, really hard out there. So, you know, and then John worked on the air conditioner. Everything did come back on, but it didn't come back on 100%. But we're still here, we're operating. So big head, handoff to John for doing that. The next one is, man, Auditor's Office. Ms. Cantu, thank you so much. Y'all, I know, working through a change over there. Y'all are trying to create another room for Judge Bauer. Y'all are shuffling desks, still working, so, hey, they're working real hard, so, hey, kudos to your department there.
Thank you.
Next thing, VDA signed over, the contractor signed over that building for NEO officially last week, and they are working in there. There's going to be, you know, a ribbon cutting coming up here in about another 30 days or so, and there'll be a big invite in the paper and in social media and everything else, so that's coming. And the other bit of news, this one's been going on since August of 2017. Hurricane Harvey blew over Blanconia Fire Department, and they got their letter, final letter that all papers were signed, and they're fixing to get their money, so.
Wow. That's been how long now?
August of 2017.
It's only six years.
That's what it started.
That's pretty good. Government work, not bad.
Yeah. It's in the mail. Check's in the mail.
So what does this mean for the Blanconia Fire Department?
It means that they get their, they didn't have any money to buy the steel, and this is what this company required first. They've been approved in all directions, but they needed the initial down payment to buy the steel. And this approval gets them that down payment, $45,000, I believe, and they can order the material, and once that material is ordered, it's.
Rebuild away?
Rebuild away. So we get a fire department back over there.
That's great.
Right now, all the vehicles are parked in the different firefighters' yards, front yards, side yards, wherever. They're just parked at their houses right now, and it's not very good, so. We had a meeting here with Mr. Mercer to open bids for the EOC and IT. EOC's the one that got five bids. IT bill, I've got one official bid, and that's all we got for that. So that was going on there. I've got bids for the roof at the Langley Building, and, you know, Johnny Segury's tried. We've contacted, there's got to be over 15 roofing contractors, and nobody wants to touch it, nobody wants to do anything. We finally got two bids and an no bid to present to the court later on, so you'll see those in the vault. And with that, I'll pass it on.
Thank you. It's been, good morning, everyone. It's been a pretty busy time here, which is good. I think we're all getting busy. Must be the heat. Anyhow, first of all, I'd like to recognize all of our first responders, fire and police departments. They've been pretty busy. To give an example, this weekend, the fire department south of here, Skidmore, Tynan, and Papalote, basically saved a house from burning. It was a, it started out as a small trash burning event that quickly spread throughout the backyard, got very close within the house. One of the sheds caught on fire. They had some lawnmower equipment that caught on fire as well, too. But what was amazing for me to see is how quickly that fire can spread, when grass is so thick, pretty quick. So kudos to the fire department. Dave, I believe you were there as well, too, so thank you for your efforts, and all of the volunteer fire departments that are out there that are providing their services for free. So we really need them. Thank you. My hats off to you. Right after that incident, there was another incident that occurred that was involving a motorcycle on 181 and 359. Fortunately, the individual that was involved with the motorcycle was able to walk away. And another intersection that's going to require some work here from TechStop, which I'm working with, to try and see how we can improve that area and make it much more safer for the people that are passing through the area. One of the things, I did speak to the individual that was hurt on the motorcycle on this particular day. For whatever reason, he decided to wear his PPE, his helmet jacket. Had he not worn that, his face would have been buried in the concrete. So good thing he was wearing it. He was thankful that he put it on that day. He says he don't know why that particular day, Lord. He wasn't from this area, he was from down the valley, but thank God he had that information that on him. One of the things, as far as the heat, that I noticed something to be cognizant of, on the Seale Cove on the main highway, it was so hot, the tar was melting, tar was coming up through the rocks, and as our fire department was standing on the highway, their feet were sticking. But the other, the concern there is as these cars pass through that, they have a tendency to create a valley, so when it rains, you're going to have a low area of cars. Be cautious when you're driving in those kind of areas, because you get very hazardous. Also, I'd like to recognize, I attended the active shooter event with the Beville ISD Police, Art Gomez and his staff did an excellent job in executing that. I then was able to participate in an action item review after to identify any gaps or improvements that could be done. A lot of great information came out. There were a lot of participants in that event, a very, very, very good event. So the good thing, you know, they did an excellent job. What's even better is they're identifying areas that could enhance their process if they would ever have to actually execute to an active shooter. Hopefully, we never have to do that. Great learning for me. Some of those things I'm going to carry back to the Skidmore ISD superintendent and see how we can enhance or improve that effort there, so, so very good. Yeah, and also, Robbie, I'd like to recognize, I got a call from a constituent that I advised to contact Robbie. There was some trash dumping at the cemetery, with Commissioner Lenny reported out as well. It's an ongoing event. It's difficult. Somehow, some way, we need to generate pride back in the community not to throw trash. I know it's very time-consuming for Robbie to be picking up trash, and there's other duties that probably weigh a little bit more that probably need addressing, so it's a tough piece. I think all of us here on the court could use your help here to figure out how we stop that. Don't know the answer. I know it's been like this for a while. The other thing, from a safety standpoint, at the intersection of 181 and 359, I've been working with TechStop for quite some time to identify mitigation that we could do to that entire highway. And one of the things was, when you make the curve coming into Skidmore, there were a bunch of trees that needed to be trimmed. Anyhow, unfortunately, TechStop was very busy, so one morning, I got out there with my pole saw, and I trimmed off a lot of trees. You now can see the stop sign before it's up on you. So there's other things that we're working on, I'm working on here with TechStop to mitigate and enhance the safety efforts down that highway. One of the, I'll save this one for last, so let me revert here. We are going to be providing some assistance to Tynan with the Roden Bridges Group. There's a need of some highway repairs. a, in need of some, some highway repairs. Okay, so let me go, I'm gonna go back a little bit, digress. So last week, I was asked to participate in grading contractors, so hopefully we could've been awarding a contract for the EOC building today. However, got the notice to participate in this team on a Thursday, gather up all the information on a Monday, and then Tuesday, still reviewing the information. And in order to properly evaluate a contractor to do this county justice, you need to understand the entire process. So the process started where I did a quick review of our procurement policy within the county, and there's a lot of great information here, but I think when we start dealing with outside contractors, we probably could use a little bit of enhancing guidance on what we need to do on contractor selection, engineering selection, and just to provide guidance. I was informed that a lot of this information is typically done by Grant Works, and I have some reservations to see how well they manage the projects on our behalf, so that's another area that we need to, we need to look into. Anyhow, we, thanks to April and her team, we set up a meeting for last Thursday with Mr. Mercer. I facilitated the meeting, and the driver of the meeting was first understand his roles, his responsibilities, and actually what we were trying to grade these contractors against. So Mr. Mercer submitted a bid package, this is it here, still not finished reviewing it, it's fairly large, very in-depth, that was submitted to all the, all the contractors. So that was submitted, trying to understand the protocol for his process, how did he submit it? There was a lot of information here, and a lot of dialogue in there. The first thing I would like to note is the contract that we have between, and again, I do not have the final version or the signed copy of the contract between the city, county, and Mr. Mercer. That was, that was a pretty interesting contract as well, too. And I'm assuming the city is participating in this event, Mr. Mercer? I don't know. Based on the contract, it says city and county, so that was.
If you could, I think, I think what they said they would do is hook us up to water and sort, no charge.
Oh, okay.
That was gonna be, if I'm wrong, that was about it.
But the contract between the county and Mr. Mercer states the two, so I'm getting, I'm doing a triage in about four hours before the meeting to try and understand, okay, what's the process, so. But in that contract, it does stipulate that the engineering firm is to provide the county monthly status reports of what's happening with the event. I asked for those status reports, and the answer was kinda uniquely, and Jennifer was there as well, too, well, we don't have to follow that. It's like, oh, you know, it, it, then Grant Works chimed in and said that basically, they put these, it's a CAN contract that they put together, 'cause they provided a contract, but they don't necessarily follow the terms and conditions of the contract. So that kinda blew me away a little bit, so I wanna meet with Grant Works, if the court's okay with that, to better understand what meat or teeth that we have in a contract. So this was just what the engineering firm, they're trying to identify what those engineering deliverables would be. So maybe all aware of that? I, I wasn't, I was taken back a little bit. I think also, too, during that meeting, what came out to me, I think we are the owners of this building, we provide the funding. I felt that they should be just a little bit of response back as identifying who's the ultimate customer for this project. I felt that that wasn't truly there, I think that probably needs to be some tweaking, so if the contractors understand, hey, we're providing the funding, we provide the owner, a little bit of effort you can give back to the court. So with that, that led on to, what took so long, we started, we started the bid back in March, here we are in August. We just did get detailed design in January, which wasn't complete, we went out for a preliminary bid in May, and there's this big gap, and I was trying to understand what created the gap. Was it material changes, was it price change, was it scope creep? The answer I got is he was waiting on information back from the contractor before he could put the bid package together, which was this document here. Sorry, I'm getting a little bit long here, but I feel this is important to the county because there's a lot of money that's involved with this. Granted, in the bigger scheme of things, a $2 million contract is really not that big in today's dollars, but it's a lot of money for this county. So anyhow, so once we got past that, then we started identifying, you know, how the contractor selection, which that was the role of the team. There's roughly a disparity of about a million dollars from low bid to high bid. There's about a $4,000 difference from our engineering firm estimate to the first contractor that was the low bid. Between the low bid and the high bid, there's roughly about a million dollar difference, kinda give you an idea. So what that tells me is not everybody's on the same page, not everybody read the specification. Are we gonna get what we want? So to me, that's a, that's a pretty, pretty big, pretty large gap. What also was identified from the engineering firm is that we, or he, put in place, and I've not seen it yet, is punitive damages to the contractor. Most contractors will take exception to that, at least it's been my experience, or have some exclusion to that, there was none. So basically, what that means, if you get to that point, that if the contractor fails to meet his obligation or his deliverables to build this building, he's then gonna be required to pay for this some kind of way, but this is gonna extend the project by the time we get legal involved. Judge, you could probably attest to that, it takes months to prove who was right, who was wrong, and that, that can get weighed out long. So this was some of the process there. So then, the, the next part that was identified is that this package went to all the contractors. Of this, we had to select a contractor based on this information. When I asked the, our, our engineering firm, was he familiar with the other contractors? He said no. The other part, and I kinda agree with him, he was getting pushed back, is that the county was providing a team to evaluate and hire a contractor without his input. So that's a little bit of a gap. So we don't know who these other contractors are, we don't know their capabilities. And then I, another thing I found out, thanks to Commissioner Faidis, is that when we go out for bid, and I gotta validate this, I hope you don't mind me questioning against you, but.
No, no.
You know, we're not able to pre-qualify a contractor to do this work, so anybody can bid. So you don't know what kinda contractor you're gonna get, or his abilities to do that. He may be perfectly, perfectly fine to do that, and then also, you know, how they're gonna manage the contract. So that's the next stage that we're getting ready to get into, is to identify these contractors, can they do that? To me, when you look at the bid tabulation, and a million dollars difference between the high bid and low bid, you can take the high one, probably throw him out, but then you still have another half a ma- million dollars between the second and the third for the low bid. So there's a big, big difference, and when you look at the breakdown of the numbers, it makes you wonder what are really, really building. So a lot of, a lot of details, I think, we need to go through, and it's the right thing to do for the county. Keep in mind, we're managing the people's money, their budget, their dollars, so we need to do the right thing for them, because that's where the money's coming from. So bottom line, to cut this short, Judge, there was a lot of, a lot of good information for me, a lot of learnings to understand how things get done in government, and as Commissioner DeWitt once told me, things don't happen quick in government, and I'm realizing that now, it takes a long time, so. I don't feel, and, you know, I'm not the, so Jennifer is the spokesman here for this team to put together, but at this point, we're not in a position to sleep good at night and award a contractor, one of these three contractors, without understanding more information as far as their capabilities in building this building for us. So I believe there was gonna be an item on the agenda, I didn't see that, but we need to defer this either to the next meeting, it may even take a little bit longer once we, we find out more information. Jennifer, would you like to add anything as far as?
No.
Oh, sorry, sorry, outta call. So anyhow, sorry, gentlemen, I know it took a little bit longer, but I feel this is very important to the county to understand, you know, how do we manage projects, and how, you know, we're trying to avoid, in my case, trying to avoid another incident as we had at the jail, on ensuring that we're getting what we ask for, so that's the, that's the bottom line. So Judge, sorry, got a little bit winded there, but I think it's important for us to understand roles, responsibilities, process, procedures, and proper evaluation. Oh, one other thing is inspection was brought up, that the inspection was gonna be done by the engineering firm, it was gonna be hired by the engineering firm. We may wanna see if we want those inspection contractors reporting back to us in lieu of the engineering, just, just good practice, you know, how they say that, you don't wanna have the fox in the hen house, so, good information, something, something to look at. So Commissioner Lenny, I know this is in your sandbox, and I know we're trying to get this building built ASAP, but I think it would behoove the, the county to, to just put the brakes on just a little bit to ensure that we're getting the right contract in place.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Olbottis, and I'm not gonna give an update, so I'm gonna save everybody a few minutes, but, but I do wanna recognize, you know, every, every commissioner's court, our commissioners come in and they provide kudos to the various departments, and, and it's true, our, our departments work hard, our employees work really hard in their role, and even in roles greater than, than what their written requirements include, and, and so those kudos are always, always justified, and, and I love hearing them. But I wanna, I wanna spend my time this morning, which is gonna be really short, 'cause I said I wasn't gonna do this, but I, I just wanna spend a minute, and I just wanna recognize and make sure that the, the audience understands and acknowledges how fortunate B County is that we have an engaged group of commissioners like we do. You just heard substantive, detailed reports from all four of, of our commissioners, and every meeting, you hear substantive, detailed reports about what they're actually doing, not only interacting with the community, interacting with our departments inside county operations, but also representing us outside of the county, and so I just wanna thank you guys, each of y'all, for, for the amount of attention that y'all place into the positions that y'all hold. I think we are very, very fortunate, so thank you all. Each of your reports was really fascinating on individual bases, differing from the others, so not a lot of overlap, hard to keep up with everything you guys are doing, and thank you, and please keep up the good work. Moving on to public comment, Agenda Item Number Six, is there any member of the public that would like to address Commissioner's Court? This is your time. Hearing none, we'll move on. Agenda Item Number Seven, the following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioner's Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a commissioner or a county judge.
Move to approve with a comment?
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Commissioner DeWitt?
Yes, sir. If the court will recall, about a year and a half ago, we had a situation where we were having a hard time finding places to go for autopsies. I think that's fixed and manifested itself again, if what we're reading about in Oasis County is true, that they're not accepting out-of-county autopsies. So the procedure we used back then, we contacted a firm, the firm came down and checked the whole area about putting a autopsy, if you will, business in the area, they said there wasn't enough work, so they didn't do it. The other alternative we had was the valley, and they couldn't do it because they had refrigerated trucks full of bodies from the border, they couldn't do it, so Lockhart was about the only place left, and a place near Beaumont. Now, we're fixing to get the pickle again, 'cause I, I noticed on this payment in our budget, we had two autopsies this time, they're costing us around $4,300. We also have autopsy transport fees, whether it's Galloway or Corvino Funeral Home, they have to physically move that body from here to where the autopsy's gonna be. Right now, it's corpus, and those fees are running around $400 some odd dollars. If they have to go to Beaumont, or Lockhart, or wherever, that fee's gonna go up, and we need to be thinking about that. I don't have an answer, but it's something, it's what I call a naughty problem, we need to look at. Also, Madam Auditor, if we could, someday, somebody's gonna say, how much have we spent on autopsies for the last 10 years? We're calling autopsy fees not only for the actual autopsy, but the transport is labeled as autopsy fees. I would recommend we, we start calling transport, body transport, figure something, so it's differentiated from an actual autopsy fee. Something differentiated, because looking at $4,700 here, and $825 here, you say, oh, this is a lot cheaper than an autopsy here. It's not, it's the transport of the body. So if we could come up with some different verbiage, so that the transport is self-evident and it's not an autopsy fee, it would, I think it would be good in the future. Somebody someday's gonna want a reckoning of the last 10 years' worth of autopsy fees, and when you pull it up, it's gonna pull them all together.
Yeah, and they do, they do go together, I mean, because the transport is part of the, part of the autopsy.
I agree totally, but it needs to be.
And I hear what you're saying, Commissioner.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Judge, that's my motion, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further discussion regarding Agenda Item Number Seven? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda Item Number Eight, approve order prohibiting outdoor burning. We received the request from our local volunteer fire departments, they held off as long as they could in recognition of our rural nature and our ranchers and our farmers, but we can wait no longer, it's become very dangerous. I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, yeah.
I have a motion and a second. Brittany, you get that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception.
And Judge, I understand it's effective immediately.
Yes, it is effective as of today. I know it'll last for 90 days unless earlier terminated by action of this court or by my own action, and then, so in November, hopefully, we won't have to consider extending it, fingers crossed. Agenda Item Number Nine, approve resolution authorizing Texas Department of Agriculture Texans Feeding Texans Home Delivered Meal Grant Program for year 2024.
Move to approve, I understand the amount is $36,000.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. I'm looking to see if it has a number, it doesn't have a number associated with it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen.
And that's from January 20, uh, 24th to December 25th.
Correct. Agenda Item Number Ten, approve and accept E.V. Bethune's letter of resignation from the Joe Barnhart B County Library Board. I have a motion and a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'd like to thank Mrs. Bethune for her service to our community, and on behalf of B County as a B County appointee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Eleven, approve appointment of Joe Barnhart B County Library Board member to fill vacancy. I'd open the floor for nominations.
There was one recommendation, but I don't know whether they spoke to Meredith Tomes or not.
Yeah, Meredith Tomes is willing to serve, and.
I'll make a motion that we put Meredith Tomes on this board.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Any further nominations? Hearing none, closed nominations, and I entertain a motion to approve Meredith Tomes as the appointment to the Joe Barnhart B County Library. I have a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve Meredith Tomes to the B County Library Board.
Thank you, Commissioner Lenny, and a second from Commissioner Ferrius. Any further discussion? Mrs. Tomes, thank you for your willingness to serve the county in this way and the community as well. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Two.
(laughing).
Don't worry, guys, we only have, we've got 60 agenda items, so I'm trying to go, I'm just. Okay, Agenda Item Number Twelve, approve interlocal agreement for E-911 Public Safety Answering Point Services between B County and the Coastal Band Council of Governments.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, approve resolution authorizing B County to settle its pending claims against Volkswagen.
Move to approve with a comment?
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner DeWitt, you have a floor.
The comment is, it's $50,000 to B County, minus 33 1/3% to the legal team, this is something that the court approved many, many months ago.
Yes, sir.
To move forward.
And we're lucky that we, we received a resolution.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And actually, as a result of this lawsuit, the Volkswagen lawsuits in Texas, the state legislature has changed the laws in. legislature has changed the laws in the state of Texas, preventing jurisdictions such as ours from bringing claims on behalf of our citizenry and reserving that right exclusively to the state of Texas. So any further discussion? Thank you to our attorneys for their good work, specifically, oh gosh, I'm going to forget her last name, Patricia... No help? Patricia Garza. My apologies to Ms. Garza. She's married, and I don't recall off the top of my head her married name, but thank you for your representation to B County, and happy birthday. No further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 14. Approve agreement between Egamire Land Clearing LLC and B County for brush disposal. This agreement, before I accept a motion on it, this is one that I'm open to discussing prior to approval. We have Ms. Cavada here for any discussion or any insight that we need with respect to this, but the long and short of it is, we have a commercial operator in the southern part of the county who's cleared some land, has a lot of brush, doesn't have a location, a private location where he can find to dispose of it, and has approached the county to ask if he can dispose of it where the county disposes its brush that we collect on the sides of the roads every day at our Skidmore facility. And as you can see from the document, he estimates upwards of 10,000 cubic feet of brush to be deposited there, and in exchange is willing to offer $4,000 as a payment to us for that. Ms. Molly, you have the information as far as what the cost is to shred. What happens is, B County, we accumulate this trash, and then we, I guess we don't shred it, we mulch it.
No.
Run through a mulcher, there's a cost associated with that. Molly, can you run through the numbers for us real quick?
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am. Come on up, Molly.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Came up with the numbers. We had a contractor go out there, he measured it. He measured it's 84 by 180 by 10, which gives you 151,200 cubic yards divided by 27, which will be 5,600 cubic yards. And before I got here, I was on the phone with the contractor.
151,000 cubic feet?
Cubic feet. No, yards.
And that comes down to...
100 divided by 27, and that comes down to 5,600 cubic yards, because you have to divide it by 27.
So the 151,000 is cubic feet?
Yeah, divided by 27.
Okay.
And then it comes up to 5,600.
Okay.
And then this morning, I was on the phone with the contractor. Well, we were able to increase the price. They want, they would agree to pay us 5,500.
Who is the contractor, Molly?
Egamire Land Clearing.
And a clearing for a private individual or a company?
No, it was for the state. The state's cleaning over there in Papalote, the brush under the bridge.
Lost.
All that area, yeah. And they didn't have...
How much of it does, do your guys over there have to handle, or are they just going to drop that?
We're not handling it. None of it.
All they...
So all he's wanting to pay us is 5,500, which was up from 4,000, which the total amount is 5,600, and some of that is our brush that we've been putting there.
Oh, the 151,000 cubic yards is our brush?
Some of it, not all of it, no. It's mixed.
And has he already deposited all of the brush on our property?
That's all he's, that was it, yeah.
He's already put brush on our property?
He's put some brush on our property, yes.
Before approval?
Yes. I did learn of that last week.
What he had done is, he just started bringing in trailers of brush, and our gate remains open, and...
We don't have a gate.
We don't have a gate.
We don't.
So our gap remains open, and eventually, the crew that was working the collection station in Skidmore noticed it, called Molly, and then you intercepted him. Actually, you went down there to look at it, and when you were going down, he was pulling in a load of brush at that point in time, right?
You know, technically, we could have him remove it all.
Yes, and he's agreed to. If it does not look good, he's agreed to remove it all.
Molly, here's a thought now, if you could. Okay, we let him put it on our property, and they pay us so much, and then they pay for...
Of course, not shredding.
They pay for all of the shredding of it.
The mulching is...
The mulch?
To get it mulched is a dollar a unit, so...
What's a unit?
Is...
Cubic foot or what?
Yard.
Cubic yard.
A dollar a cubic yard?
Yeah, the company that we hired to go out there, he charges us a dollar a unit. He indicated as a unit. And I spoke to him, and he said that it's a yard, cubic yard. He said, it's actually, they estimate it as a cubic yard, and they call it a unit, so it's a dollar. So if we came up with 5,600 cubic yards, and they're willing to pay 5,500 for kind of covering.
Now, yeah, but here's the rest of the story. Now we got a pile of mulch that we got to do something with.
We have a company that comes in and they...
What does that cost?
Free.
Free?
Because they go sell it.
Yeah, they go sell it.
They sell it, they move it on.
So is there any cost? In other words, if this exceeds the amount that is dumping, is there going to be any cost back to the county? Or we're going to be on a net net zero, so basically, we're helping?
The possible only, not necessarily fee, is the job of them loading the mulch into the container for the individual to remove it, and that is all we do.
So that cost will come back to the county?
Yeah, that we normally do.
Any idea about how much that is?
It's labor.
No, it's just the manpower.
Yeah, it's labor.
It's labor.
And they're out there anyway, pushing the brush together, making sure it stays together.
Molly, are they, so they're willing to pay the 5,000 and some change to store it on our property, on the county property, plus they're going to pay the 5,000 or whatever cost to mulch it as well?
We don't have to pay them.
Who's going to pay them?
No, no, we pay to mulch it.
Don't we pay to mulch it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We don't pay for the mulch.
So this fee will basically cover the mulching.
It'll cover our cost.
Yeah.
And it's not a net positive to the county.
Now, the part that's still bugging me is them bringing it on there without permission.
Exactly.
I don't, that bothers me.
Exactly.
Because if they did it, it sounds like we might need to put up a gate.
Yes, yes, I agree with you. I don't know why they're never...
They did it, somebody else said, "Hey, man, I saw them do it."
I agree with you there.
And I think it should be a big gate that slides, because open ones...
Yeah. So like a bar gate?
Yeah, slide across it, and it could be secure better than the...
And the practical side of this is, if, not to belabor the point, and I know y'all understand this, but when it comes to, you know, small tracts and folks out in the county that do have brush accumulated, they can put it out in the bar ditch and then call Road and Bridge, and Road and Bridge comes by and picks it up and deposits it in the same location. What we're talking about here is decidedly different and dramatically different, and so, you know, I'll put it on the agenda because I'm not super comfortable with it myself.
You know, Judge, something else that bugs me, they're working for the state of Texas. It was in their contract to do something with that brush with the state of Texas, not bring it and dump it on the county. I really think, somebody needs to go back to the state of Texas, "Hey, look, this is what your guys did. You need to get it straightened out," because those state contracts are usually very specific about what has to happen to that material.
And I don't think we're sharing in the profit of that contract.
No, and he got so much money for doing all that brush, and I don't know, Judge.
So when I was out there taking some illegal dumping, Ray was talking to me about it.
Ray?
Yeah. And what they normally do is, is they'll try to find a landowner somewhere around, and they generally will pay $4,000 to $5,000. Can we take all this brush and put it on your property? So they're paying that cost to dispose of that brush. In my opinion, if they're going to put it on county property, they need to pay the cost of disposing that brush on county property, and then on top of that, pay to the mulching fee of that brush as well, so at least we can take in a little bit of revenue, you know.
It brings up my mind...
That's the way they normally do it, he said.
There's a policy, we do not take land clearing. We don't do that. Whenever we're picking up in Pettus or Fairway Ridge or whatever, somebody's clearing an acre of land, we don't accept that material. That's what we've done.
Well, they do it without...
Well, I know, I know. And we have a chance to rectify that. They can come pick it all up if they don't want to do what Commissioner Lenny's saying, that, okay, we'll take it for 5,500, and you pay for all the mulch, and you can leave it here. If not, get it off our property.
I agree.
And we do have a mulching contract, correct, Molly?
Yes.
With Waste Management? That's the one we have, and we used it, what, once this past year?
We used it three times this fiscal year.
Okay, so did you have a service?
No.
They put some in the Widdington pit also. We put it in the pit, and then at Claireville, they have a little...
We take it to the other pits, but the other pits do not allow private individuals to drive upon their property. It's only a county, only a county vehicle that can go and dump it, because you have to be careful of what's inside the brush. If there's lumber, or if there's tires, hot wire, that would mess with the machine that's going to come and function, so...
I have a little bit of an issue. If it's something that if a local rancher was clearing out a pasture to improve it for hay, we'd say, "Sorry, we don't take that material from you," but for a company that's not based in B County, doing work for an entity that's not B County-related, I mean, Tech dot does a lot for us, but they're not B County-related, they're state of Texas-related, and we'll make an exception for them, to me, that seems kind of backwards. And I don't know if we need to review the policy in consideration of that, or if this is something that, you know, could be a, maybe a little profit center for Road and Bridge moving forward, if it's something that we would want to consider. But I just, if I weigh the equities, it's, you know, a little bit of income, and you never want to, you know, turn away from a little bit of income, but it needs to make sense in the balance and in the balance of the equities. To me, it doesn't really seem super fair.
And you opened the door now, too, when somebody says, "Well, you did it for them. Why wouldn't you do it for me?"
Yeah, because we just received Friday another call from Aspen Tree Service, and asking if, you know, over there, a dating question and things like that.
Sounds like you're going to get a gate.
So I know, I know. I don't know why there wasn't one to begin with, but...
All right. So anybody want to make a motion on this?
I agree with Judge on that. It's not going to be...
Judge, I'll make a motion. We disapprove of this, and get the fence up as soon as possible, and have them remove their material from our property.
I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second.
What comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
So totally agree with where Commissioner DeWitt is going with this, is that there's just too many unknowns. Some key things have got pointed out to me, you know, the review of the contract, you know, what's really in it between Tech Dot. I think that's a key word. You know, they may see this as an opportunity to...
Make a little more profit.
Make a little bit more profit on their end, you know, by subcontracting some of this stuff out, so... I'll second as a motion.
Got a motion and a second. Molly, thank you for bringing this to the court's attention. I appreciate it. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to consider it, so this isn't a negative vote to you. It's just weighing the equities of the potential opportunity, it just doesn't make...
Yeah, and there, the lady I'm in contact with at the company, I stressed to her that he did come in without permission. I said, and I also said that it can get disapproved, and he may be able to have to remove it. And so she was going to ask us to increase the price by 5,500, and she said that the max they ever paid was 4,000 to a landlord. I said, "Well, you either dumped a lot of brush there," and so she talked to him, and so obviously, they have the money, but they haven't moved it. So I don't know.
I'd expect that that brush be removed from our property this week, and if it's not, then I have a feeling that my office may be reaching out to Tech Dot to get a better idea of why one of their contractors was illegally dumping on county property.
Yes, because I had a call, contact Tech Dot, one of the contractors.
All right.
Quick question. Molly, do you need any support from the court to get that fence up? Is that something we need to help you with?
No, I think just in break, if somebody's going to...
Great.
Thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Molly. Moving on. Agenda item number 15. Approve Spectrum Enterprise Service Order for B County's Data Fiber Services. I believe, Craig, this is, we've already addressed, this was the bid award, and we just need to get this back on the agenda because some of the contract language needed to be finalized. Is that right, or...
Just need a signature.
Okay.
This is the, from my understanding, there wasn't a signature line in the bid proposal, so they actually put the bid or the contract together for what we approved, and now requires a signature.
Thank you, Craig.
Move to approve for signature?
Second.
It's for five years, I understand.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Agenda item number 16. Approve recommendation to authorize the district court reporter to temporarily utilize the office of Commissioner Precinct One.
The key word, temporary.
Temporary, up to 72 months.
Right, now temporary, because, now John has agreed, called me about this, and I told him that was fine. I mean, I don't normally use my office. If you call my office, my cell phone rings, so I didn't see a problem with it. So I make a motion that we approve the district court reporter to temporarily utilize the office of Commissioner Precinct One.
I'll second that. I'll take it immediately, Commissioner.
And I want to say thank you for saving our very core.
Oh, no, we have other plans for you. We'll get to it later.
Thank you.
Now that I know you have all this extra space over there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a secret school agenda.
That's that SS agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Lenny. Commissioner, I'd like to also acknowledge and thank you for making the motion yourself. I'm sure three other commissioners at this table were eager to make this motion for you, but that is really in your sandbox, so.
You need to bring.
I'm glad you were.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 17, review and clarify community affairs permit fees dated October 24, 2022. Commissioner Dwyer, this is your agenda item, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, gentlemen, the court approves the community affairs permit fees, just like they do road and bridge, any other permit fee. And a previous director was charging permit fees that weren't on the list. And we didn't realize this until something came up a couple of weeks ago about, why was I charged this fee? I got a call, and recollection, I said, well, I think we charge that. And then I got to, no, we don't charge that. So I got with Mr. Guerrero, and said, no, we don't charge that. Let's see what we can do, talk to the auditor, we'll get to that in the next item. But, Mr. Guerrero, would you like to go over the fees with the court, and item by item, and let us know what we have? And then the court can, I'm not sure whether y'all have had a chance to review those, I need to make that note.
What?
I know.
You can make that up.
There you go, thank you, Judge. This modern equipment here.
Robbie, I'm the director for community affairs. The fees that we had revised, when I started back in '14, I was just following the rules that I thought were correct, and apparently, they weren't. There were some that I did modify, that I spoke with Commissioner Dwyer on, seeing how he used to be the director of the department. Some of the fees that were taking place were not legit, so those were changed. On our electrical permits, from what I understood, is anytime there was interruption of service, anytime that there was any type of work where the electrical was to be interrupted, there was a fee. But going into looking in, those were not true. The only time that we do charge is when there is new service. So some have been revised, it was approved by the court, so, I mean, I was just following what I was taught when I first started.
And I think what happened, there was a fee charging era, and we'll get to that in the next item, because what had happened, someone had come in, and they changed providers.
Yes, sir.
And somehow, it fell through the cracks, and that's an unauthorized fee, so that's what we're here to rectify.
Yes, sir.
Are there any of these other fees that need to be clarified for the court?
No, sir, everything should be self-explanatory, the only one was the electrical.
Okay, because the fees were established years ago, and a lot of this is involved with the colonias.
Yes, sir.
And Attorney General's Office, and specifically, the AEP and a contract and a paperwork we did with them when I was first in community affairs. And through misinterpretation, there was an error.
Yes, sir.
And that's basically, we wanted to review these, be sure everybody was comfortable with them. Is there anything that needs to be clarified?
No, I think that's the only one. I got the call, and these folks here shop their electric, every time the contract comes up, so every year or two, they're shopping to see where the best rates are. And then when she went to get a permit, she went, I'm just shopping, I've got an existing meter, so I'm just shopping for a better rate, and that's what triggered all this on here.
Well, and what's interesting, I don't remember that coming up before. So something, like I say, fell through the cracks somewhere, and they were told, well, you've got to go get a new permit. And that wasn't true. It was an error, on multiple parts, and I'm not sure it was even ours, it could have been the electric company or somebody else, but we're here to clarify.
AEP does not have that in theirs, I think San Patricio might have that in theirs, because they're on one, and she gave me the copy of the rules for AEP, and they don't charge for shopping that out.
Robbie, do we have any procedures and the protocol on how this needs to happen? First question.
I mean, it's just.
Of course, you know, I know AEP, I know when I got mine done, it was a, it was an interesting process.
It is.
It was a glorious process.
You have to go, I mean.
Get your 911.
Yeah, get your 911, your property inscription, ESID number, if you were San Pat, San Pat does not require that number. But the nine years that I have been here, and this is the first time anything like this has ever come up.
It never came up when I was there either. And some other permit fees that were being charged that we stopped was a building permit fee, and a flood pump fee.
Yes, sir.
Which they were not authorized, some other counties charge those, and the previous director thought, well, because they charge it, we should charge it, but they were not authorized by the court.
So where's that electrical?
Because it was on square footage of a house and everything else, and we didn't do that.
Commissioner Oliver, it's a development permit fee, so it's tied to the provision of electrical service, but it's not a fee for electrical service at the county.
That is correct.
It's a development permit, it allows Robbie or whoever is with community affairs to go out and make sure that there's, that it's really septic related.
Good, thank you for the clarification.
The way it all came up, there are several colonias, if you will, in B County, and that's the Attorney General's definition of a colonia. That is, they don't want to be called colonias, but technically, that's what they are. There was a problem 20 some odd years ago, all over this part of Texas, with people coming in and just getting hooked up, getting their sewer going, and it's on the ground. And it's a health and safety hazard, malaria, cholera, the whole nine yards, it's bad. So the Attorney General's Office came up with this development fee, if you will, I won't call it that, that in those affected areas within 150 miles of the border, which we are, we can inspect that septic system, and if it's not proper, they don't get their electricity hooked up. And until it is proper, no electricity. Now, there are exceptions for the size of the acreage, one thing and another that key into this, too, but that's the bottom line. And what has happened in B County and surrounding counties that are south of us, there have been so many illnesses that haven't happened because of that particular Attorney General ruling, that it's amazing. Because we had multiple sewers on the ground in B County when I took over, and we got 600 some odd thousand dollars in grants to put in three septic systems all over the county to help alleviate this, because you can't tell somebody, they just bought the land for their dream house, they couldn't afford the land to start with, and then they can't afford to put in a septic system, and you take them to court, it wasn't right. So we found grants and put them in. We literally put them in all over the county. And it's been a good thing, and we have to keep up with that, to keep getting grants from the state. And it's simple procedure now, it isn't for the homeowner the first time, because they got to go get their 911 number, they get an ESID number, they got to coordinate with AEP, but it's seamless once you realize what to do.
That's where the process, so.
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry, quick question. So, based on your expertise, are the rates that was provided to the court, do you feel they're in line? Do we need to do any adjustments?
Oh, we adjusted them back in October, they're fine.
Okay. We don't. Thanks for sharing, I didn't.
They're fine.
See that on the case?
Yes.
So that's the only one.
If service is interrupted or shut down, is that going to?
That's what I was taught, like, when I came on in '14, so I was just following that.
So if I'm just shopping for a rate, and I want to, I found ABC Company over here is a lot cheaper, and I want to change, I can change. If it's turned off.
See, and that's one of the things, you know, you could be with, say, with Reliant. You want to go to Stream, you call Reliant, you tell them you don't want to be with them anymore because you found a lower rate. Well, they're going to tell you, okay. Stream's going to tell you, okay. But as long as that permit process doesn't go through, you can get shut off by Reliant, then you're without electricity. So now you call AEP, and AEP is the one, well, permit has to be done. That's where it happens.
That's where the gap.
And that's where the gap needs to stop. If you're going to shop, don't have, don't get the electricity turned off.
Exactly.
Don't have it turned off, because we're required.
Just go to the company, they'll switch.
Because we're required, before we can turn it back on, to go inspect that septic system. We're required to do that.
And same thing for electricity as well, too? Do we need to inspect that?
No, 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 no. We're not qualified to inspect electricity. Our venue, our responsibility is that septic system. Period, period, that's it. If it's, if you walk out there and it looks pretty good, hey, it looks great, let's get it turned on, and they'll fax it in, or I don't know how y'all are doing it now.
So part of the process, the septic tank has to be approved before you can get.
Well, let's say it's an existing house, an existing septic system.
Okay.
When you go out and you look for surfacing sewer, you look for ditches, you look for water surfacing, that sort of thing, if you don't see that or smell anything, it's fine, get it done. You go out there, and there's water on the ground, and there's sewer on the ground, sir, I'm sorry, until you get this corrected, we can't get it turned off. And that's, it's that simple.
You know, some people say that they've been out there 40 years. I've asked them, how long has the septic system been out? Well, since we built the house. Septic system is good for 20, 25 years, that's it. Then you got to come up to standards. So, a lot of those is what's happening, is the system fails, and if they have power shut on, or that house is an existing house, and you're wanting to go in there, but your system is failing, because I'm not going to give you power until you go through all the steps to get that septic system up to 23 standards.
And see, a new septic system's running, what, $5,500 now, roughly?
Yeah, so altogether, you're looking at about 7, almost 8,000 by the time you get the installer out there. Then you got to get a designer, if you need to get it to design, you got to get that. So you got to pay for that, for your own.
So do we amend this one?
No.
There's nothing to amend.
We were just reviewing these.
Oh, just to clarify?
Just to clarify, that's all. No, the fees, in my opinion, Robbie correct, they're fine.
They're fine, yes, sir.
Because what they do periodically, they will query the surrounding counties to see what they're charging, so we know we're not too far out of line up or down. And that's what they did before we did this in October.
So what are you going to do if that incident happens where they cut out power, they go to another company to get power, and that they're requiring a permit?
If AEP is requiring them, because a lot of times, they tell me, AEP is requiring me to get a permit. So without that email from me stating, okay, they're good, and I can get it, that's why Johnny Gutierrez, who's AEP, he'll call me, and I got this, I got the CSID number, this is the property, you need to get a permit pulled, they're going to come in. So a lot of times.
If they've already gotten a permit initially, can you just send an email saying that they're permitted and good to go?
You could, yes, I could.
That'd be a simple way of bypassing, having to go through the paperwork and whatnot.
Except.
They've already been permitted.
There's a time, and this happened when I was there, when AEP calls, and they say, man, we need to cut that off, there's a problem.
Yeah.
And that happens, too, because they've seen that sewer surfacing, they know what we're looking for, too.
Exactly. And see, that's one of the things that Johnson or old, or whatever, they'll come, and they'll let me know, you know, and having that same issue at Windy Hills, so.
Is it possible you can get with AEP, this person that you know, and have them submit what their policy or procedures are, just so we can have kind of a process?
Yes, sir.
If you can get that, that'd be great.
I can get that to you by the end of the day.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to take care of this during this time, too.
Okay, good.
Judge, I. Anything further?
No, actually.
Moving on, agenda item number 18, approved request to consider reimbursement of fee collected in error. Thank you, Mr. Guerrero.
Judge, this is exactly what we're talking about, and I believe the fee was $35.
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that that $35 be reimbursed to that individual, let the auditor take appropriate action to get that done.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you again, Mr. Guerrero.
Thank you, Court.
Moving on, agenda item number 19, approve the award of bids for the Langley Building's roof replacement. Commissioner Farias, I'm going to turn this one over to you. I did look at that number.
There's two numbers. Interesting. 87 and 69.
And the two high ones.
Missed 69.
Are on the co-op.
Mm-hmm.
And the lower bid is just an independent contractor or businessman here in town that just bid it out, but he's not on the co-op. The two co-op bids, and if you read them, there's not much difference in the scope of work that they're going to do.
Is this part of the grant?
No, 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 no. This is totally different, because they're already storing.
Update our facility.
They're already storing records over there. We had to get that.
Because what came up in our meeting is that anything involving a grant.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, no, it's totally different, Commissioner.
Adaptive and JL squared.
But is Florida's in here? Because I didn't see it.
I sent it to Candy, Candy was going to put it in, but I have.
Yeah, because I don't think it's in here, Commissioner.
Okay, hold on. I know, I know I sent it to, or maybe the files to.
Maybe it's in a different. No, no, 69 is adaptive.
That is.
Yeah, it's just not in here, Commissioner, it just didn't make it.
The other bid is Florida's.
Mm-hmm.
And that one was 37,000 change.
And it's with standing seam?
Not standing seam, they're all gabled, they're all this group type.
Okay, okay.
The standing seam is something totally.
JL squared was standing seam, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
There was one standing seam.
Yeah, because I saw that number, and I was like, how would we add that number for that size building?
JL right here, CMU walls constructed by 2x6 framing.
That's what I thought.
Underlaying, felt paper, metal roof, fascia board, prime party plank, boards on the side required. Adaptive. Who was this thing?
What is your recommendation?
The roof doesn't leak now, it just didn't have any sides. And every contractor.
And we need a seam.
So we don't need to do anything?
No, we need a seam there.
The soffits are all rotten, there's holes, there's holes in the side of the soffits. So what every contractor went out there to do was going to cut all that edge off of that building, and build a frame out, and have a gable roof on top of it.
Okay.
And eliminate that, and use hardy board for.
Instead of lumber, or hardy board there forever?
Yeah, well, no, the rafters, all, everybody said 2x6.
Right, but I'm talking about around the outside.
Yeah, around the outside, yes, all hardy plank.
So what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is to go with a 37, with T. Florida's here, the local contractor.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Thank you, Commissioner Farias, for your efforts in.
And just a little, there was over 13 different contractors that came to see it, and almost all of them walked away from it. They just didn't want to do it. And Johnny Seguero had a whole bunch of them, so.
What was the amount for T. Florida's?
I'll look it up, it was 37, I'll get it, hold on.
Yeah, because it was.
I'll see. Get T. Florida's. I'll get ready for the next one.
And then we're going to put in a mini-split, too?
No, no.
That's going to come next, yeah. The ACO come next.
Right now, we just want to get all those records that are in there secured, and that no creator starts climbing in the side and jeeling on April's boxes or anybody's boxes.
Not that there's anything stored in this building that would be of interest to anybody.
No, I'll get to that.
Only in order.
T. Florida's.
Lots of numbers.
What are all these numbers?
It's okay, I'll get it from you later.
You'll get it from me?
Yep, of course.
Yes, but it is 37,000, and I'll give you the exact change.
No, that's good, thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it.
I have a motion and a second for award this bid to T. Florida's for 37,000 and some change.
And local, too, so that's a plus.
Yeah, that is a good.
Yes, sir. And they can start on it.
Today?
Tomorrow, this week? They can start on our rating. So they can move us up the list whenever we want, if it's approved.
Right, we're ready.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, agenda, we're halfway through. Yep, about.
Five minutes.
Of this meeting, of course, you still got the other meeting. When does the other meeting start?
Not till.
Five minutes.
We've got seven.
Oh, seven.
I'll be calling that meeting late.
37,250.
37,250.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it.
Agenda item number 20, approve and accept into record order of removal for B County Constable Precinct Three effective July 28, 2023. Agenda item number twenty, approve and accept into record order of removal for B. County Constable, Precinct Three, effective July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
This is an item that we've been working on since last October, and Mr. Knight finally got it produced and sent it through court. Judge Watty ran it through Judge Harrell's court, and he issued it July the twenty-eighth, so I'm asking the court to accept that.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Our thanks to Mr. Knight for his diligent work on that. I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to review the petition that he had to draft to bring that.
Co-warranto.
Yeah, it was a substantial amount of work that he put into that effort, so any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Moving on, agenda item number twenty-one, declare vacancy for the seat of B. County Constable, Precinct Three.
Judge, I'd like to run to the court and declare a vacancy in that, in that seat for a constable.
I will second that with a question.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner, do you have the floor?
Do we have all this equipment turned in?
No.
When I checked last week, it had not been. I had checked with Ryan and Veronica, and they still had not received the radio. It's one radio.
One radio?
One handheld radio charger and a little television.
Can we withhold final paycheck until we get it?
No, we already asked.
No, we cannot.
It's good talk. Well?
We need policy on that, though, just a little
Wait a minute, wait a minute. If, well, policy, if it's not in policy, would policy allow that?
No, not on, not on paycheck.
Well, we could have, we could get some
I asked Mr. Castillo. Mr. Castillo said that we couldn't, we withhold his paycheck.
But we could have some kind of, to be able to, I don't know. We had talked about something to put in there to help with the process.
What are you following for theft of county property?
Yeah, we could look at, let county attorney look at that. Those radios are a couple hundred bucks, right?
Couple thousand, couple thousand.
That's felony.
Yeah, and he's been contacted several times. He's been contacted.
If he didn't show up to court during you, this proceeds
Yeah, he didn't show up to court.
Our chances are
Well, we have these people called warrants and deputies. Can we send him a letter that he's now reached the felony status?
That was gonna be my next take. I just did try to call him. Who's gonna draft some type of certified letter to, I think you do that that way.
I agree with what the judge just said. This is county attorney territory. All we need to do is let the county attorney know he has a two-thousand-dollar radio that hadn't been turned in. He's no longer a county employee.
Yeah, and move forward with that.
Move forward with that. Let the county attorney
I'll let him know, Ryan, that you're available to assist as needed as well. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Just a bit of housekeeping. We're gonna go through agenda item number twenty-two, and then the court's going to go into a brief recess at that point in time. If you were so inclined, Judge Casadesa's body is going to be passing by the courthouse, and so we're gonna take That's, yeah, so we're gonna take our leave and walk outside so we can pay some final respects as he passes by. Agenda item number twenty-two, approve appointment of constable to fill the vacant seat of B. County Constable, Precinct Three. Commissioner Fadillas, this is your agenda item. Do you have the floor, sir?
Judge, Commissioners, I have a candidate, Mr. Danny Madrigal. He's been a lifelong resident here of B. County. He's also currently employed as investigator in the Imperial P.D., and he's about to retire there, and I'm gonna bring him on as a constable here of this court with him.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I have a motion and a second. Got a motion and a second. Mr. Madrigal, thank you so much for your willingness to serve and your interest in serving your community in B. County. Any further discussion?
What's the effective date?
The effective date is whenever the judge can swear him in on the win.
We'll try to get it done today.
Sounds good.
If not, it'll be tomorrow.
And then you have seven days from the time you get sworn in to get your paperwork to T. Co.
All right.
All right?
Yes, sir.
That's the only thing that we have. And you got all this, he's got all of his
It was in the packet, actually. Yeah, thank you.
So he is, he is at good standing, so good.
Excellent. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Congratulations. Welcome, and thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you for stepping in. At this point in time, we're going to go into recess. We'll be out. We'll be back in five or ten minutes.
They were laughing at Blake's other beer.
They're Blake's, all in white or gray?
Chance going and checking with this.
Chance going and checking with this.